Time is 6:08. Today's date is September 11th, 2017. This is a regular board meeting for the Westlaco Independent School District and I call this meeting to order. Let the record reflect that all board members are here with the exception of Dr. Rivera and Andrew Gonzalez. Item number three is opening prayer. Dr. Canales.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and everybody in the audience. For invocation or opening prayer, we have from Weslaco East High School, our CIF, one of our curriculum instructional facilitators, Belen Torres, who will deliver the invocation. Ms. Torres.
Before you get going, let me correct the statement. Dr. Rivera has joined the meeting at 6:09. Go ahead.
Good evening. Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you today to thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon our community, our families, and our wonderful school district. We also ask this evening that you comfort the families of those who lost loved ones on September 11th, 2001. Please help us remember those who were lost, but also help us remember that they did not lose their lives in vain. We ask that you continue providing unity to our great nation as we face the many challenges that lie ahead, both socially and globally. We also ask that you keep the residents of the state of Florida safe and continue to guide and provide for them and their well-being, as well as for those who are dealing with the aftermath of Hurricane Harvey in the Houston area. Lord, we also ask that you help our friends to the south in the states of Chiapas, Tabasco, Puebla, and Tamaulipas as they deal with the aftermath of last week's earthquake and the remnants of Tropical Storm Katie. And finally, we ask that you continue to guide our great school board, our awesome superintendent, and all of our school leaders and all of the stakeholders of the Weslaco ISD as they make decisions that will improve the learning of all of our students. Please keep us safely in the palms of your hands, and we thank you for the wisdom and intelligence you've given all of us. In your sense precious and holy name we pray, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Item number four, pledge of allegiance, Texas pledge. Dr. Canales.
Good evening again. We have Mr. Carlos Robledo, who will introduce our proud students, who will be saying the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce the drum majors for the Wildcat Regiment. They can please stand and come forward. And the first person I'd like to introduce is Alyssa Aguilar, and she is the daughter of Armando and Brenda Aguilar. Alyssa is the head drum major for the Wildcat Regiment. She is also the president of the National Honor Society, vice president of the Computer Science Club, and secretary for the Hispanic National Honor Society. This past summer, Alyssa received the Outstanding Veteran Award at the RGV Contempo Drum Major Camp. She also attended Texas Blue Bonnet Girl State Leadership Conference in Seguin. Alyssa plans to attend the University of Texas at Austin and major in architectural engineering. She also hopes to get her masters in architecture and intern throughout her college career for the American Constructors and ultimately work there. How about a big hand for Ms. Alyssa Aguilar? And if her parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? Also tonight, we'd like to introduce Victoria Mena, and she is the daughter of Raymond and Adelia Mena. Victoria is a junior at Weslaco East High School and is also a drum major for the Wildcat Regiment. Victoria is very active in UIL, Business Professionals of America, the National Honor Society, and Hispanic National Honor Society as well. Victoria plans to be a music major in college. How about a big hand for Victoria Mena? If her parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? Also this evening, we'd like to recognize Jasmine Peña, and she is the daughter of Faustino Peña. She is also a Wildcat Regiment Assistant Drum Major and a flute player. Jasmine plans to compete in the 2017 All-Region Contest and solo and ensemble. She is also involved in the Book Club, HOZA, and the National Honor Society. Jasmine plans to attend Texas State University and major in nursing and earn her registered nurse license. How about a big hand for Jasmine Peña? If her family members are here, can they please stand and be recognized? If everyone could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and
Thank you so much. Moving on to item number five, we have awards and recognitions. Dr. Canales.
This evening, we will be recognizing our campuses who earned distinctions for this past year's performance, so leading us will be Mr. Robledo.
All right. Well, tonight, we want to recognize several of our schools for the tremendous success with the state of Texas Assessment of Academic Readiness Exams. Our students did extremely well, thanks in part to our very dedicated staff. Our district has earned the MET standard distinction. Our schools were compared to schools across the state according to size and type, and based on these comparisons, they receive a distinction designation in several categories. So now, I'd like to introduce those schools. And the principals are here, they can please come up here and receive a plaque. I'd like to start off with Tony Rico Elementary, distinction in science. Okay, we'll continue on? You want them all to stand up here? Yep, okay. We are going to move on now to a distinction in closing the performance gap, Mary Hoag Middle School. Another school we'd like to recognize, distinctions in math and student progress, Weslaco East Up next, we'd like to recognize distinctions in language arts, social studies, closing the performance gap, and post-secondary, B. Garza Middle School.
Good job, Mr. Garley.
Up next, we'd like to recognize distinctions in language arts, math, student progress, and post-secondary readiness, Memorial Elementary. Up next, we'd like to recognize distinctions in language arts, science, student progress, Congratulations. Up next, we'd like to recognize distinctions in math, social studies, student progress, closing the performance gap, and post-secondary readiness, Coiada Middle School. Congratulations. Next, we have distinctions in language arts, math, student progress, closing the gap performance, and post-secondary readiness, Margot Elementary. Now, the next two schools receive a very special distinction because they received all distinctions that were available to them. Let's start off with distinctions in language arts, math, science, student progress, closing the gap performance, and post-secondary. Six of six distinctions for Sam Houston Elementary. The next campus received seven of seven distinctions. Distinctions in language arts, math, science, social studies, student progress, closing the gap performance, and post-secondary readiness, Central Middle School. Now, Central Middle School and Sam Houston Elementary were two schools of only 400 schools in the entire state of Texas to receive all their distinctions, so congratulations to them.
Congratulations to all the schools, all our principals, and of course, all our staff. Y'all made great improvements, and I see great things coming to WISD. Our superintendent, Dr. Canales, thank you for leading us and helping us achieve what we've done so far, and I know that we have a lot more to go, and we will gain more awards, more recognitions, and we will shine. So, we are lit. Go ahead, Doctor.
Just we've been honored to work with such a great team, from everybody at the district level to everybody at the campus, truly blessed. And Board of Trustees, I just want you to know, when we talked to the principals about this and departments, most of everybody was like, "It's only the beginning, just wait." So, we're looking forward to great things through teamwork, and thank you for your support of the team.
Yes. Dr. Rivera, I'd like to ask you to add a few words. I know that you're up on current events when it comes to this.
Again, it's a team effort. All the principals, and we're very hard with our staff, the superintendent, the teachers, everyone, and I think just about everyone I hired at one time or another. Probably everyone, so they were very, very high draft picks. And all the new ones, since I left, also very high draft picks. So, good team.
Good team.
Good team.
Thank you, Doctor. Anybody else want to add a few words? You see Loto?
No, I'm okay. You're fine.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you. Yes, congratulations again, and excited for what is to come. Item number six, proclamation for Weslaco Reads, Weslaco Succeeds. Dr. Canales.
Well, Board of Trustees, our team has been meeting with our city manager and our city a couple of weeks ago, it may be a month or two now. We met with both the city manager and our city mayor, and we talked, had a good conversation about the importance of reading and writing for the success of a community and for the success of children. And our mayor, you know, asked us to do a joint proclamation where it's not just Weslaco ISD, but it's the city of Weslaco promoting literacy and acknowledge the importance of literacy for everything great in life, including critical thinking and creative thinking, inventions, success in college, attracting businesses to Weslaco, the city of Weslaco because of a populace that's highly literate. So, this proclamation is a joint venture between our district and our great city.
Okay. So, let me read the proclamation. Whereas reading aloud to young children is one of the best activities to stimulate language and cognitive skills and build motivation, curiosity, and memory; and whereas reading aloud to a child at least 15 minutes a day helps brain development, vocabulary, and future success in school and life; and whereas kids who read at least 20 minutes a day are exposed to 1.8 million words every year; and whereas children who are read to at least three times a week by family members are almost twice as likely to score in the top 25% in reading compared to children who are read to less than three times a week; and whereas with the advantage of technology, the American economy is becoming more knowledge-based, demanding that the citizens and the workforce of a city be more literate, and thus, as individuals be able to read, write, and communicate at higher levels in order to keep commerce moving forward; and whereas skillful, critical, and voluminous reading is one of the most important personal habits that lead to a successful academic career and a happy productive life. Erasmo Lopez, school board president, together with the superintendent, Dr. Priscilla Canales, and the mayor of Weslaco, David Swaddis, do hereby recognize the critical importance of Weslaco Independent School District's Lit for Literacy Initiative, and do hereby join our great city in launching a community initiative entitled Weslaco Reads, Weslaco Succeeds.
Special thanks also to Mrs. Alma Cabal, is she in the audience, and Mrs. Sue Peterson, and Mr. Abe Aguilar for meeting with our city librarian on the Weslaco Reads, Weslaco Succeeds Initiative.
Very good. I like it. That's a very catchy slogan. Very good slogan. Thank you. And moving forward to item number seven, we have public comments with which nobody signed up, so we'll move on to item number eight, superintendent's report. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we have four items we'd like to report on. Number one is enrollment. Two, insurance. Three, the Advanced Academic Academy. And then the last one's the INS Tax Rate Survey and Town Hall Meetings. It's a follow-up to our last board meeting. So, for enrollment, do we have the slides ready? This enrollment report does not include the plans for the Head Start, the ELF programs at Progresso and at, no, I'm going to say the wrong one, at Donna ISD, so we still don't have those students with us. But so far, as a district, comparing last year's second week enrollment to this year's second week enrollment, we're down about 166 students. The greatest difference in terms of numbers exists at our elementary campuses, where we have some campuses with as many as 93 fewer students from this point, or the second week, in the previous year.
This is very, very good compared to last year. I think last year was at around 600, that we were less than the previous year. And I'm thinking, probably the elementaries, didn't y'all make some changes?
Res zoning?
Yeah, for the elementaries, we did not make the rezoning changes. We're at the middle school, but if you look at the middle schools on the next slide, the middle schools are up 118 students. So, they're up at the middle schools. The elementaries is where we have the decline of 331. Mr. Aguilar and our principals are working on finding out where these students are. Principals did a great job of putting information together to include how many have gone to charter school that we know of right now, how many are in the pet system, is going to schools in other districts, and then doing what we can to follow up with kids that we still don't know. There are 98, so we don't know where they're at to try to get them in.
Again, 166 compared to last year is a big difference. Good job to everyone here.
Okay, so that concludes our enrollment. If you have any questions, we're here to answer questions.
Well, I'm sure the public and our local students are seeing what's going on here in Weslaco with our schools, and it's a good thing. It's a good thing, and I'm sure, Doctor, that had some difference with the big numbers we had last year to this year. And Dr. Canales, I'm sure you had something to do with that. Go ahead.
I had a question on the, you know, on the like Mary Hoag, Coiada. I see early college that they have increased 65, 64, and 62. I just want to make sure that they have all the, everything that they need, you know, as far as furniture.
We added some allocations, so they're covered.
Recovered? All right. Just want to make sure of that. You said you had some numbers as to what, some students, where they went and where they left and...
Mr. Aguilar, in working with the elementary principals, has more data if you'd like to hear about what we're discovering.
If you can put in an update for us.
An board update, we'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Ready to move on. For insurance, we have Mr. De La Rosa.
Good evening, Dr. Canales, Mr. President, members of the board. We have concluded our fiscal year for our current health insurance program. Our new TPA, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, took over as of September 1st, so this is data for this fiscal year. There is still three months of runout that will go through our old TPA. But just as a recap of our plan year so far, as far as medical claims, the first slide shows what we paid this year versus what we paid last year. So, for this current plan year, the 1617 plan year, the district spent approximately $11.1 million of, excuse me, $11.1 million in medical claims versus last year at $10.5 million. That's an increase of $573,473.63, so we almost had an identical year, if you will, as far as medical claims.
And with the increase, Andres, where is the difference to pay for this, for the $573?
Well, right now, we're looking at the overall, Dr. Rivera, $3 million deficit at the end of the year, and we're looking at the fund balance, the surplus for this year budget to use it for that, so, most of it.
And I know we're doing an audit later on on these figures. I sure want to have a good audit to make sure that we didn't pay more.
As soon as we finish the runout, Dr. Rivera, we'll start working on getting the information for the audit. This is information for the board that we'd like to, you know, show as far as kind of an idea of where the dollars went. This is an individual stop-loss report for this, for this plan year, and this year, we had to raise our specific deductible to $125,000 based on our experience the prior year. So, as you can see, there's, there was 11 individuals, or 11 members of the plan who exceeded the $125,000 threshold, and then there was another 12 who exceeded $70,000. So, as you can tell, we've been reimbursed approximately $506,000. We're still owed about $103,000. And of course, as the plan progresses, as a runout continues, you'll see these figures change as well. As far as prescription drugs go, last year we spent, or this year, we spent $3.4 million versus last year of $3.3. Approximate difference was $146,272.2. So, our claims for prescription drugs has remained pretty consistent since last year over the, over the course of the fiscal year. Just kind of give an idea, this slide represents some of the high-dollar drugs that the board, that the plan provides. You know, we do have a very rich benefit plan, but we also like to take into account, you know, some of the drugs and the price of what the district pays. And you see a lot of commercials for Farxiga, Lyrica, Humira. You know, you have Phil Mickelson up there, we mentioned this before. So, they are advertised very heavily, but as you can tell, they are very expensive. So, that's why there's several, we have several steps in place to make sure that other drugs are tried before the high-dollar brand is authorized. These are the administrative costs or the fixed costs, if you will. $2.7, $2.8 million approximately this year versus last year, $2.7 million, increase of about $40,000, $41,000 approximately. This is, the increase is due basically to the increased premium we pay for individual stop-loss insurance. The administrative fee and everything else was pretty, was consistent over the prior three years we were with Freidys. So, overall, the district spent $17,335,656.15 versus last year of $16,595,663.51, so approximately $760,000 more this year than last year. It's about a 4% increase. And that is all I have for the health. Anybody have any questions?
No. Anybody? That's it?
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir, thank you.
For our next report, Advanced Academic Academy, we have Samantha Maes. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm really excited to tell you about this new opportunity for middle school gifted and talented students. It's going to be called the Advanced Academics Academy, and this right here is our new Advanced Academics logo, and our motto is Unlocking Potential. So, I want to start by talking about, are we meeting the needs of our gifted and talented students in the middle school? So, some of the characteristics of middle, well, all GT students is they learn skills really quickly without really having to learn very much in the classroom. They think abstract and really complex and are very logical and insightful. They have a wide range of interests, and sometimes they focus it on one interest, and that's their passion. They also have a highly developed curiosity. So, when I think about what's currently being offered in the middle school, I'm not sure if we're covering all of these different areas of the GT students' needs. So, what we're currently offering is algebra, geometry, English 1, and then we have fine arts, UIL activities, academics, and UIL fine arts, but these are about the only things that we're offering. And all of these courses that are advanced are also open enrollment, so we're not necessarily doing anything extra for those students that have other needs or areas of interest. They are being serviced through differentiated instruction, you know, through their educators. Most of the teachers have their 30 hours of GT training and six-hour updates, but we really want to offer something more, something that can really get those middle school students interested in and passionate about, and maybe make a spark that they, you know, wouldn't have been turned on if they hadn't had this opportunity. There's currently 261 middle school gifted and talented students that we hope to, that we will be servicing in the Advanced Academics Academy. So, who are we servicing? Six, seventh, and eighth grade students at all four middle schools. These GT students will attend one day a week for three hours at this academy, and it's going to be located at Central Middle Schools, Annex B. It's the two-story building to the southwest side. Why are we doing this? Homogenous grouping of gifted and talented students allows them to really be in a creative environment where they can think critically and they can talk with other students that are just... are just like them. They can kind of debate and critical, or, you know, critical thinking, creative problem-solving, and provide feedback and input on other students' interests and passions. The, some of the goals of the Advanced Academic Academy is for middle schools to have a place where they can be creative and get inspired and do more of what they, they're interested in that they can't really do in their regular classrooms. We really want to build the rigor for the middle school to the high school to challenge those students to be able to do better on their STAR tests, reach the, reach the master's level, which is index four for the district. As, you know, just improve on STAR scores and EOC scores. We would like to see an increased AP participation of students who are ready to meet that next level and be in dual enrollment courses. We also hope to see higher SAT, ACT, and TSI exams. Currently, I think our average is, I want to say seventeen point seven on ACT, and I think that we could do much better. We also want to increase post-secondary options, you know, get kids into private schools, competitive programs, and things like that. And we're hoping that we can build, you know, that creative thinking and creative problem-solving and just, you know, help these students reach another level that they haven't had the option or the potential to do so far. The type of curriculum that will be in place with this program is self-directed learning. Thinking, research, and communication skills will be the focus. There will be lots of rigor in the program, the different units that we'll be doing. We're going to have innovative projects and activities that will reflect the students' creativity and individualities. Also, the activities and projects will be tailored to the learning styles and the learning interests of the students, where we're going to be polling students, where are your interests, what kind of ways do you like to learn? And then from there, building units and curriculum that will be for the students based on what they really like. Will also be involving high-level questioning and increase, in hopes to increase the students' depth and complexity of their education. We did hold a parent meeting last Wednesday. I would say it was counted approximately maybe a hundred families. I felt like there was a lot of positive responses and excitement to this new Advanced Academic Academy that we're providing to our students. The parents were able to ask questions, and we were really able to, you know, talk with them and, and ensure them that this is a program that's meant for the students and it's going to really help them reach the next level. This academy will begin on Monday, September eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen, next Monday. The teachers that were chosen were Mark Nelson, Colette Lowe, and Brenda Davila. And that's the end. Does anyone have any questions?
What was their role before they were selected to be?
They were elementary quest teachers. There's eleven, and we, we chose three of them.
And will they be somebody there to service the school that they're leaving?
Yes, yes. So there's actually, we used all eleven quest teachers based on the populations that they had at each campus. We were able to take the ones that had the lowest. I think there's, there's six teachers that are going to be servicing six hours at other campuses to cover where the, the, the other three teachers are coming from. And then there are four, there's three, three that are going to be, only going for three hours a week. So every teacher's moving, every teacher's traveling, but they're sticking with the same grade level the whole entire year in order to continue with some continuity with the students. So it's going to be the same teacher every, like, the whole year. So they'll still get the same type of instruction that they're already getting now, but just with a different teacher.
What kind of programs are going to utilize for PSAT or ACT prep for those students later on?
Oh, so, okay, we're planning on using like more advanced vocabulary and making sure that the way that we're asking the students questions are higher level and that we're, we're challenging them to speak with, you know, in different ways, hoping to pick up that advanced vocabulary.
Yeah, we, we haven't identified any specific support program, but that's something that we could be looking at.
Okay. And we're, we're still using the same criteria to select GT students?
Identification criteria has not changed as of yet, has it?
No, it's not. If, once you're in the gifted and talented program, you continue on in middle school as well.
So it's only one day a week?
Yeah, one day a week for three hours.
Excuse me, on Mondays?
Uh, Monday through Friday. So it'll be, so some campuses will be going from eight until eleven, and then some will be going from twelve to three. It's grouped, we, we chose the different campuses based on the number of students in order to ensure smaller group setting with the three teachers, because, you know, we don't want too many kids in the classroom because what, you know, it'll be too much.
So the, the children will be bused to Central?
Yep, mhm, yep. Central students will walk, and the other students will be bused.
Now, will the students miss for three hours the same, you know, block of classes every time?
Yeah, well, yes. Depending on where they're scheduled, they will be missing the same, same classes, but only, you know, for that certain amount of time every single week. We wanted to keep it the same day so that it's not confusion or cause too much conflict with students not knowing where to go or teachers not knowing where the students are.
And I'm glad that we're servicing them, but after this year, we can look at the program and we have to make adjustments.
Exactly.
We can do that. The principals have input also with the middle school principals?
Yes, we've been in close contact with middle school and elementary principals.
And one of the things, we're going to, we're going to try it out, and then already, you know, we know as we try it, there's going to be some hiccups and closely monitor it. We're so happy that we have somebody leading, you know, this effort. So that she will be working with the principals and with the teachers on any of the lessons we learn to quickly, if there's any gaps to close. And we want to try something new out, see how it works, and then if we need extra supports, come back. You know, she'll come back to us with the principals and say, we may need some extra supports, we didn't expect this, and move from there.
I like the point where you said that it also will increase, hopefully, the scores and the mastery level for all our students.
Yeah.
Do you have any specific ideas of what kind of activities they're going to be doing there?
Um, yeah, like I said, we're going to, first, we'll, we have some units already decided, but we're going to really try to use the learning styles and the learning interests of the students, because we really want this to be something that they can, the academy, they can go to and really be interested. You know, it's not going to be pre-programmed lessons that they might not find any interest in. One of the things that we're, one of the components so far is going to be taking, you know, a lot of the campuses, the elementary level have been doing robotics in their quest programs, but also on the campuses. So we want, we're trying to implement another type of robotics that these students haven't seen before. We're currently working on a CSI unit for the students to start us off, and then based on the learning interests of our students, we're going to develop lessons based on that.
How are they going to handle those three hours of their coursework from, from their regular courses? How's that going to work out in regards to them making sure they're keeping up with, with their...
Right, well, we're going to be closely monitoring the students, ensuring that they're, you know, not falling below a certain level. I've had the technology department has built a program where I can see every student's progress report and benchmark grade, like, all in a row. So it's going to be very easy to identify where the students are or who the students are that may be falling behind. We're going to, we're going to be working closely with the teachers, you know, close contact, good communication, if they have questions for us, if we have questions for them, you know, really staying in contact. Depending on what course they're taking, you know, the teachers should be notifying them of the things that they need to be working on. I, I feel very confident that through apps like, or programs like Google Classroom, that the teachers can notify the students of the assignments that they may be missing. But we're going to be continuing to record teachers to make sure that that's happening.
Program sounds exciting. I'd like to observe it once it's in full swing.
Yes, please do.
It sounds really interesting.
And if this board or Dr. Canales can, can, we can do anything to, to help the program, please do, do come forward and talk to Dr. Canales, and, and if we need to get involved or whatever we can do, we'll... It, it is exciting and, and something new, and, and our students deserve the best, so we'll make it happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, the last report is the INS tax rate survey and town hall meetings. At our last board meeting, we were asked to get community output regarding consideration of increasing the INS tax rate by two cents. We've done several things. First, we sent home parent surveys, and we have some of the results back that we will be sharing at a later time with you. We also used our electronic system to send staff surveys as well to get our staff's input. And we have two town hall meetings set up for next week. Oh, no, for this week, sorry, for this week. Tomorrow at Be Gar's at six PM, and then on Thursday at Central Middle School at six PM. We also, thanks to you, and it's not an INS tax rate average committee, it's advisory committee. We have a couple of community members that have been identified by you to serve on this advisory committee. We will be presenting the parent surveys to them, the staff surveys, and the notes from the town hall meetings, and asking for their recommendation to administration before we come to you with all of it. Hopefully, at a specially called, a special called board meeting on September twenty-fifth to provide you administration's final, final recommendation. The other, next slide, do we have the slides up? Next slide, in the surveys and also in the town hall meetings, we are including, next slide, we are including information, just basic, what is an INS tax rate? And we also include the tax rates from school districts near us. And we point out that Westlaco ISD has among the lowest tax rate in the RGV. Do we share?
Andres, who's lower than us? I thought we were...
I think it's Port Isabel, sir.
That's a chapter of forty-one district.
Yes.
But I don't think you should say among the lowest. I think it should be the lowest. No, but right now, right now. That's what I mean. If someone sees among the lowest, you just put down...
It's not the same as the lowest.
The lowest, right.
We can correct that.
Port Isabel is a chapter forty-one, those, those don't count here.
Right. We can, uh, we can fix that on the PowerPoint for the town hall meetings, because we have those beginning tomorrow.
And let me just say that I was here for all these, and I'm glad you put these down, the bond elections. I was here for all, all four, ninety-six, two thousand, two thousand and six, two thousand and eight. I was also here, I think it was two thousand and ten, and it didn't pass. And then the last one didn't pass either, so this is, this is good information.
And we're also doing our best to explain that for the two-cent tax effort, which results in four hundred thousand dollars in collections, the state contributes a six hundred thousand, more than half for the million. And then the last piece of information that we've communicated, and we will in the surveys and of the, and the surveys and town hall meetings is a house value, it's just per year, what that equates to per year, just so that we can keep our...
These, these last two slides are powerful slides. When it's hard to say no, when, when you look at the tax rates, and then you look at the amount of the increase, and the amount that it's going to bring a million dollars. So it's, I'm thinking it's hard for anyone to say no. Because again, you know, I, I don't, I don't like to raise taxes. And right now, with the Houston hurricane, everything is going up.
Right.
And we're going to go up at the same time. But again, it's hard to say no when we are the lowest, the amount of money that it brings, and then the amount of the increase. Observation.
Yeah. That is true. And at the same time, Dr., are, you said everything's going up, the, the prices for the school district. Everything's going up also, so it affects everybody. Is that all?
That concludes the report.
Okay, that, that concludes the superintendent's report, so we will move on to item number nine, consent agenda. And I'll start at my left, Dr. Rodriguez, do you have anything to pull?
I've got it.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes, sir.
Oscar?
No, sir.
Patrick?
No, sir.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
We'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. We have a motion by Patrick and a second by Oscar to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Item number ten, discussion items. Item A, interim financial report for the year ended August thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, Mr. Andres Sanchez will take us through this report.
Now, do we want to take both of these together? A and B, or A and then B?
You, you just need to address which ones you're...
Okay, we're going to address A first, then we'll go with B.
Both are addressed, Mr. Sanchez.
Yes, and interim financial report, Mr. Lopez, Dr. Canales, members of the board. This, this report is, the title says it's not audited or adjusted. These numbers do not reflect yet the five days of school that we had, which would generate ADA revenue from the state. It also does not include accrual salaries that we have for our weekly payroll. Our bus drivers, custodians, security, maintenance, energy management, our employees that got paid on September first, all the days that they got paid for got incurred in the sixteen, seventeen years. So that entry has not been reflected. Neither has the days that the teacher worked, the nurses, the days they worked the new school year, but also incurred prior to August thirty-one. They're not reflected yet. After we run the payroll in September, they'll be calculated and reflected later on. So those numbers are not yet here. But without those numbers, we have collected ninety-six point five percent of all the revenue that we had budgeted, ninety-nine point ninety-nine of the local revenues, which include mostly property taxes, ninety-six point forty-five percent of the state revenues, and ninety-one point seven of the federal revenues. And of the expenditures of the amended budget that we had of a hundred and seventy point four million, we have already spent and encumbered a hundred and fifty-five point three, which is ninety-one point one percent of the budget. Again, it doesn't reflect the last two weeks of school year that are not already incurred, that haven't been paid and are reflected. So the final report, when the orders presented, will have the correct figures. Any questions on that?
No.
Okay. On B...
Do you see any problems or any concerns?
No, no, no. We, we did the final amended budget, we covered the function, make sure we had enough money per functions that we cover everything that might come up that we were not aware of.
Okay.
On the next item, on the tax, we did not get the report from the county.
Is that, are we moving on to B?
B, yeah.
Let me go ahead and read it first.
Okay, sorry.
Item B, acknowledgment, acknowledgement of the Alka County Tax Office Collection Report for August two thousand and seventeen, current and delinquent taxes. Andres, go ahead.
Well, I did not get the report. I was supposed to get it this afternoon, but it hadn't been signed, so I don't have it. I'll include it in the update on Friday. Yes, I don't have it.
No information.
Right, correct.
And that's on behalf of the county? You didn't send it to them?
The county is the one sending, yes. They said they had it finished, but it hadn't been signed.
Okay.
But the tax collector's collector, so they couldn't release it like that.
So when will you bring it back?
In October, but I can let you know through the update. Or I can do it on the September twenty-fifth meeting if you want.
Oh, the special...
The special meeting, yes. I can do it then.
Okay, good. Item number eleven, discussion and possible action items. A, discussion and possible action for the board to set a meeting date for a public hearing on proposed tax rate for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. Okay, that's it.
Okay. Board of Trustees, as you know, the tax rate must be approved by the last day of September two thousand and seventeen. Explained during the superintendent's report that we're getting information from the community, parents, staff, and at town hall meetings to help us make, make our recommendation to you for the tax rate. We will need a public hearing on Monday, September twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen, at five-thirty PM, in which, after the public hearing, we'd like to move into a special called board meeting for the purpose of making our recommendation on you approving the tax rate for this school year. So I'm recommending that the board of trustees set a meeting date for the public hearing on the proposed tax rate for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, on Monday, September twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen, at five-thirty PM.
We'll move. Second.
It was Monday, September the what?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
At what time?
At five-thirty PM, public hearing.
Okay, who, who made the motion? Was it Dr. Rodriguez and Isidoro?
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Rodriguez and a second by Isidoro to set the possible action in board, to set the meeting date for public hearing on proposed tax rate for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, on September the twenty-fifth at five-thirty. Is there any discussion?
At, at this meeting, just present all the information, surveys, reports to the board, so the board can hear how the community is responding.
Yes, sir.
But work on those last two slides. Again, those are powerful slides to present.
Yes, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Item B, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of final completion and final payment for the tile project at various campuses, Rodolfo, Rudy Silva Elementary, Justice Raoul Gonzalez Elementary, Doctor Rodolfo E. Margo Elementary, Memorial Elementary, and Wesco East High School. CSP number one-seven dash zero-five dash thirty-nine. Doctor Canales.
Board of Trustees, we are recommending that you approve the final completion of, of the vinyl floor tile installation project at the following schools, Seville Elementary, Gonzalez Elementary, Margo Elementary, Memorial Elementary, and Wesco East High School. And the final payment to the contractor, substantial completion was achieved prior to the due date of July twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen. Therefore, administration is not seeking any liquidated damages. So this is just our recommendation for final payment. The principals, along with Joe Castillo, maintenance and operations supervisors, have looked at the work. Anything of major concern has been rectified, and we're ready for final payment. Correct.
So everybody's happy?
Yes.
I move to make the second.
I'll second.
Oscar's second.
I have a motion by Patrick and a second by Oscar Calero to approve to the final completion and final payment of the tile project at various campuses. Item CSP one-seven dash zero-five dash three-nine. Is that good enough, Ivan? Do I have to read all schools? Good enough, thank you. Okay, um, is there any discussion?
Any liquidation damage? You said no. That was the reason?
They, they finished within the time.
Within the time?
So there's no reason to assess it.
And everybody is happy?
Yes.
Okay, as long as everybody's seen it and everybody's happy, I'm good. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item C, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of administration's ranking recommendation for the proposal received for the fencing projects at various campuses, Rodolfo, Rudy Silva Elementary Junior. Junior, uh, that doesn't sound right. Justice Raoul Gonzalez Elementary, Doctor Rodolfo E. Margo Elementary, North Bridge Elementary, Joe Calviel Kate Complex, Aquatic Center, and the Kate Early College High School. CSP one-seven dash zero-five dash fifty, rebid. Doctor Canales.
Board of Trustees, at the July sixth, two thousand and seventeen regular board meeting, the proposals were rejected and administration was asked to rebid. We did mail nineteen proposal packages. Three of the four who bid the first time submitted bids. Administration is recommending, with a total of four hundred and seventy total points, Four Seasons Development Company. So I am therefore also recommending that you approve the administration's ranking recommendation of the proposals received for the fencing projects at the various campuses. This constitutes approval for administration to enter negotiations with contractor ranked number one, Four Seasons Development Company from Houston, Texas. And if, and if an agreement cannot be reached with contractor ranked number one, administration would end negotiations with contractor ranked number one in writing and will proceed to negotiate a contract with contractor ranked number two. And the number two was G and G Contractors with a total of four hundred and thirty points.
So move. Second. I have a motion by Isidoro and a second by Doctor Rodriguez to approve the, the fencing project as recommended by administration and go with the bidders as described with Four Seasons, and then if not Four Seasons, go to G and G, and then N M Contract. Is that correct, Doctor Canales?
Yes.
That's correct?
Yes, that's the way it works.
Okay, and this is for item CSP one-seven zero-five dash fifty, and it is a rebid. Any discussion?
What was the difference in the rebid? Did it come out lower or higher?
I don't have the number. It's very close, Doctor Rivera, to the number that we had before. I don't have the exact number, but it's very close.
I don't know these verbs, but I know number two is from Edinburgh, and the one you're recommending is from Houston.
Yes, sir.
Didn't they have any problems with the floods there in Houston?
I don't know.
Is Four Seasons?
I know they, they have a shop in Bronson, where they work, the, the work they did before. This is phase four of the fencing project. Phase three, they did it, and they worked out of the Bronson ones. Yeah, the company.
Four Seasons?
Four Seasons, yeah. They did phase three.
Four Seasons did, did the one last time?
Yes, they did a very good job. Excellent.
And plus, they're the low bid of the three also.
About thirty thousand.
They have a shop in Bronson that they work out of when they come.
I just have a question on the.
And they use local subs for the work, so, and that, Houston's going to affect them on the.
I like the idea of going with this company. I'm just, I think Doctor Rivera's concern is valid. I mean, will they be able to start on time, complete on time, do delays to the flooding?
Yeah.
And there's a, I have a question on the warranty, because I know the, the Four Seasons Development on the warranty and materials is only one year.
Yes, sir.
And then on the second one, which is G and G Contractors, that's three years. And then on the chain link, uh, the ones you guys are recommending is one-year warranty, and G and G is five-years warranty.
Yes.
And I just wanted to bring that up, because I think warranty, you know, it's, uh, it has its price as well.
Yes, you know, that's right. Good, good observation.
Yeah. And then, of course, Four Seasons is going to take you a hundred and twenty days to, to complete, and G and G is ninety days, so I just wanted to make sure that you guys are aware. I mean, I don't know if you guys didn't take that into consideration.
They did, we did, when we did the evaluation with the points, and, uh.
Have we had any warranty issues with the phase three?
No, no. No, when we looked at the samples that they gave us, you know, the, last time the board asked us to go check the samples, and we did, when we went to rebid, we assigned points to the samples. And we had the two welders in the maintenance department that helped us check the samples, and they both preferred the Four Seasons Development sample better than the other companies. Better job on the welding. That's what, we went, we felt comfortable with the ranking, even though it takes thirty days more to do the work, and the warranty longer than the other company.
And I believe the last time when they did it, they were very fast.
They worked very good, yes.
They worked very good. And Four Seasons?
Yes. Yeah, when they commit, they want to make sure they have enough time. When they finish early, they finish early, but they don't make sure they want to cut themselves short and then end up having liquidated damage and things like that.
Have you talked to Four Seasons lately? After the hurricane?
No, I haven't, no, I haven't.
Well, Doctor Rivera, on the, the recommendation is to, to talk to Four Seasons, and if they can't do it, to move to the second one?
Correct.
So, yeah. I think that should.
So we have to, we have to come back and meet and reject number one?
No, no, the, the recommendation is that they give us approval to start negotiations, and if we cannot close negotiations with number one, we'll end up in, send them a letter by fax or by email, and then we go with number two. If that doesn't go, we go with number three.
Okay, I'm not going to argue with you. I know that in past times, you know, when one was not approved, you come back to the board to approve the next one, even though the motion states it, it's not worth the battle. I'm going to vote against anyway, so.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of going with the recommendation of administration to go with, uh, with a low bidder, which is Four Seasons, and then proceed to the other contractors if nego, if the negotiations do not go favorable for the district, uh, on, on item CSP one-seven zero-six dash five-zero, which is a rebid item. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
Me?
No. Okay, how many ayes did we have? One, two, three, and two? Okay. The motion carries. Item D. Discussion and possible action to approve the schematic design phase of the improvement for the girls' athletic facility and boys' athletic facility at Wesco High School and Wesco East High School. Doctor Canales.
Board of Trustees, before making administration's recommendation, we do have Mr. David Iglesias, you are here, right? There you are, okay. Here to present the schematic design for the girls' athletic facilities and the boys' athletic facilities at Wesco High School and Wesco East High School project. He did present, uh, this information and this PowerPoint to the facilities committee. I believe we met last, was it Thursday? Last Thursday. Good to see you again.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, Board of Trustees, Doctor Canales. I'm David Iglesias of PBK Architects, here to present the schematic design for the athletic locker room renovation. This was for Wesco East High School and Weslaco High School. We'll begin with Weslaco East High School. This is the existing layout. The area in green is the girls' locker room area. The area in blue is the boys' locker room area. The gray area is, uh, shared spaces and mechanical rooms. As you can see, the space for the girls is far less than the boys' locker room. Some of the items we looked at in the existing facility were overall square footage, some code compliance issues, ADA, life safety, corridors, egress, dead-in corridors, et cetera, space, storage. We were also looking at the, uh, some of the items related to the roof as well. As you can see here, life safety, ADA compliance, and as well as Title IX, uh, gender equitable as far as shared equal spaces, were some of the items we looked into. And so here's the proposed layout. In evening, the square footage between the girls and the boys, we basically swapped sides to allow slightly little more square footage for the girls, since the boys do have another fieldhouse on site. And we were, in working with the administration, uh, staff and administration for this campus, we were able to work and, uh, provide a locker room space for all the sports. We also took into consideration, there are several male coaches for female sports, so we took that in consideration in locating their office spaces in the girls' athletic areas. We consolidated the restrooms and shower areas. And then on to Weslaco High School, Sepulveda Gym. The girls' locker room area is shown in green, the boys' area shown in blue. This is the existing space. Some of the items we looked at were storage, code compliance, um, space available for each of the different sports, which some of them have to share between sports. Here's some pictures. Storage is a major concern in this area as well. There are some plumbing issues, ADA, there are steps to lead to showers that need to be addressed. You can see one of the coaches' offices is pretty cluttered with the space they have available. This is a proposed layout. We centrally located the coaches' offices. We provided a, a private locker room, shower area for the coaches, and we were able to take advantage of the available space we had for the additional sports. So we worked with administration and the coaches to, to work on the layout as far as what sports were needing spaces. We consolidated the shower area, the restrooms, and we were able to basically divide the area in half where we could separate the area during games, so the home team would have their locker room area and the visiting team would, would have an area to use as well. So in looking at Sepulveda Gym, this space, even though we were able to work on a layout that, that worked, we still do not gain any additional square footage. We're still confined to the area we have in the existing space, other than relaying out some of the walls and so forth. So taking this into consideration and also taking into consideration the new fieldhouse project for the new high school, we looked at the existing fieldhouse and possibly repurposing some of that space to add some additional locker room space for the girls' athletics. So you can see here the existing fieldhouse. It's all blue, it's all for boys' sports currently. It's an open space concept. You can see a lot of unused space. There are some concerns here, code compliance and so forth that would need to be addressed, ADA, uh, restrooms non-compliant, storage. Some of the roof items and so forth, and there's also some site issues that we'd have to look into as far as access, ADA ramps and so forth. So in looking at this space, this is a proposed plan to be able to add some additional square footage for girls' athletics, basically cutting the space in half. Boys having, you know, a certain half, the girls having their half. We were able to, uh, address the, the needs for athletics. There are still some common areas that they would share, for example, the film room, that would still be used, you know, between boys and girls. So this, this layout adds additional square footage to girls' athletics, which they would not be able to get at Sepulveda Gymnasium. Another item we looked at was the, uh, boys' gymnasium, which the boys' locker room, I'm sorry, at Sepulveda, the existing boys' locker room. And basically, we did, we married what was done at the girls', um, and the boys' area. One of the other items we looked at was the public restrooms at the gymnasium, the existing restrooms at the gymnasium. They are non-compliant, they do not comply with ADA. There is a two-by-four grid ceiling, uh, in the existing restrooms, and the access entry is very constricted and confined, and it's a ADA access issue as well. So we looked at that, we took some pictures, and so we proposed a, a layout to help renovate this space. This is a space that is, will be used for the public during events, visiting visitors as well. And so we re-laid out the space, we widened up the main entries, and adjusted the plumbing fixtures for ADA compliance. So it's something we looked at. All these items, we, uh, generated some probable costs for all of these options. So option A, which was the first option we looked at, was the renovation of Weslaco East Fieldhouse, as well as the girls' area of the Sepulveda Gymnasium. And so total projected cost was three point seven, and we also identified several alternates as well to be considered, with possibly a total project cost of four point six. This was for option A. Option B, same thing, Weslaco East Fieldhouse was the same. In this case, we looked at the renovation of the fieldhouse for Wesco High School. And so the total cost, or projected cost, we're looking at four point six, and we also listed several alternates as well to consider, with a total project cost of five point six. Option C, Wesco East Fieldhouse as well, Wesco High School Fieldhouse, and just the girls' area at Sepulveda Gymnasium. And you can see the projected cost, five point five. Alternates, we indicated as well, um, at a total cost of six point six. And then option D was basically all the locker room spaces at Wesco East, Wesco High School Fieldhouse, and both girls and boys at Sepulveda Gymnasium. We presented this at facilities last week, and I believe there was some discussion, so I'm not sure.
How much, Marty, do we have allocated for this, Doctor Canales?
We allocated, correct me if I'm, uh, it was four point six million for the total project.
Okay. That's all we have.
That's what we, that's what we have, that's what we started with. And of course, it's like you, we're getting concerned with what's going on, you know, in Texas for the Hurricane Harvey, and in Florida, and costs just, you know, continuing to increase.
Yep.
So, uh, so we did meet with the facilities committee last Thursday, ran through the different options. The committee was pretty much asking questions, same questions. What do we commit to? What do we go to the board with? What's the absolute need versus things we can address later on? We looked at two options, option A and option B. The facilities committee, uh, after much discussion, and we were here for quite a while, recommends going with, um, the schematic design of option B as presented by Mr. Iglesias. And we have here Coach Real House Chancellor. Any questions?
Are you okay with option B, Coach?
Yes, sir, I believe that that is, is the best option where we can generate more space for our girls' athletics. I believe option B is, is a.
It takes care of both girls and boys, correct?
Yes, sir, it does. Of course, my, main priority is the girls. On the alternates, we just have to see where, where they come back. I think we have a lot of reusable lockers that we can refurbish ourselves and, and re-utilize. But again, uh, option B would, would, would give us a lot more square footage for our girls, yes, sir, which is what I needed.
Option B includes the renovation of the current fieldhouse, correct?
At, at both high schools.
At both high schools.
So give me an idea, uh, how is this going to work out? Now that we're here and we're getting ready to start working and getting ready to build, I know these facilities are used basically every day.
Yes, sir.
So how, what's the plan?
Well, uh, working with Mr. Iglesias here, we're, we're, he's done some projects of this nature already in other schools. One of the options that we're looking at very heavily is to try to do it at the latter part of basketball season. We're still busy with our facilities, but it's a little less traffic, where we can start getting in there and figuring out, are we going to close out the entire facility? At Wesco High School, we have, we have a little flexibility where we can utilize lackey locker rooms, PE locker rooms, there's a little space out there as, as well that we can use. At Wesco East High School, it's a little bit harder. Uh, we, we, we talked about possibly, uh, renting some portable units, where we might have to shut down the, the entire building and work, and work that way. One thing I can say, sir, is, um, we've been working with the coaches very closely, uh, the coordinators, and we've been talking about this pretty much all summer long. We're prepared to, to handle whatever the construction might bring, and our kids are prepared as well.
Now, is there options, uh, is there any kind of rental trailers that'll have showers? Or is there any? or is there any, any, any kind of that in the industry, or any, anything that, that's out there?
What we have done, what I have checked, several schools that have gone, gone through this before, and what they do is they rent just, you know, squared storage units with hooks inside where the kids can hang their bags, and that's pretty much it. Uh, I'm, I'm sure that there probably will be some more, uh, extravagant, uh, portable type of lockers that we could rent, but, uh, that's what most schools are doing, so.
Are the, the projected costs of those rental units built into that 4 point, the-
No, no.
How long will this project last?
Uh, it should be able to be completed within a year. We're going with option B. The challenge is gonna, I guess, determine how we're gonna procure these two projects, if it's gonna be two separate or one project. So that's something we're still working on in the schedule. But I don't see a reason why it should exceed more than 12 months.
Okay.
This, this option goes above, above budget, I think, by about sixty, $62,000 right now?
Right.
And then cost of rentals, maybe push it to something like 100,000 over budget?
Yep.
Could it possibly?
It would do that.
It's near a million dollars, A and B, the difference?
It's a million.
Yes.
A million dollars? Let me ask, uh, Dr. Cantu, Mrs. Morales, and Ms. Peterson, which of these options do you all like the most?
Dr. Cantu, Mrs. Morales?
All of them are, are good, because they benefit the girls, but I know the principals are still on the campuses.
Ms. Morales?
I sit on the facilities committee, and we went back and forth, and we studied it quite a bit. It wasn't just a haphazard type decision that we made. So we looked at going back and forth between option A and option B. C and D, we really didn't consider, because that was way above what we had been talking about. Uh, option B was what we decided, because it brought both facilities up to what needs to be, and, um, it was, it was the best use of our, uh, budget.
B, Ms. Morales, same, different?
D, if I could have it all, but, but no, B, sir, B, because first and foremost, we wanna take care of our females, our athletic, and this is gonna give us-
That was my concern, the girls.
Yeah. And I think this, uh, a lot of the girls' programs will, at the new building will be, have an area, uh, for them.
Raoul and- The girls will still have their locker room at Sepulveda, it's just not gonna be touched at this time, but they're gonna gain locker room space-
Correct.
So that's a million dollars more, Andres?
Yeah.
Between option A and B?
Probable cost, this is probable cost, I mean, this is based on previous project experience, price per square foot. Um, one of the items that is helping us is that we confirmed with our M E P that the rooftop units are the, I'm sorry, the, uh, package units that are currently at these campuses are fairly new. That was, they were renovated a couple years, a couple years ago, so they can be reused. So it'd be a matter of just redistributing some of the-
I think it would've been easier, easier, we would've been, uh, built the football fieldhouse, so that way the all-football team could move, and then you could have just a fieldhouse to work on, in both areas, both schools actually, but, yeah.
Did the building committee consider where we're gonna get the extra 100,000 from?
Say 100,000?
A million, no? No, it's, it's a million difference from option A and B, but to do-
B is only sixty, yeah, sixty-two thousand more.
Right, but sixty, 60,000 more than, than budgeted, and then we're gonna have to pay for rentals, that's not budgeted on here, so we're looking at unknown cost.
And at this point, you really don't know.
B.
At this point, you really don't know, 'cause it hasn't gone out for bids yet.
Correct. Right.
It's based on estimates, it could be more.
Now, Raoul and, and, uh, Ms. Morales, let me ask you a question, uh, and also to Coach. Will you guys, I want you guys involved with the scheduling, as for, as of when they start?
Right.
Because I don't want, I want it to affect as little as possible.
One of the things that, that Mr. Iglesias and I, Iglesias and I also talked about was sectioning off, not having to go rent, but sectioning off areas and working, you know, and just re- removing kids and putting them in areas, that's also an option there.
One of the things that's happening at least would be, we're, we'd be flipping the boys and the girls.
Right.
So we would be able to move the boys into the existing fieldhouse somehow to get them through those showers and those-
Okay.
Poppers, and then the girls would stay where they're at until that new section that's gonna be for girls would be completed, and then move the girls over and complete that second section, that then we move the boys back in.
So it'll work?
There's, there's ways to do it, but we just have to figure out the logistics. The first part is to get the approvals, so we can move forward.
Well, let's start thinking about it, 'cause it's coming.
And the same thing at Westaco High School, uh, uh, Mr. Realhas and myself and Coach Salinas have talked about using the lackey, as he mentioned, and then also, we're fortunate that we have the stadium there, and there's some dressing room areas that we'll also use.
Also be able to use, okay, good.
Mr. Sanchez, once we include the, the alternates, you know, on, on option B, it's probably about a million-
About a million, yes, sir.
What, what?
One thing we want to do is, uh, continue with the proposals. By the time we bid this project, it'll probably be at least three months before we go out to bid. By that time, we should have the, uh, audit completed, to find out exactly how much more money we have surplus at the end of the year, besides the 3.5 million that I expected. We expect to have more, but I don't know exactly, I don't wanna give you a number now until we work more on the books to pay bills that we have, so we might not be aware of, to see how many purchase orders are not gonna be cleared, 'cause the items we're not receiving, we don't have to run it forward to the next year. By that time, we'll know better which, after that we can buy, if we have more money available.
Okay.
So these are just your estimates?
These are estimates, it could be more.
Why do you play it out for bids?
Correct.
It could be a lot, probably a lot more.
Probably more, yes.
Especially with those hurricanes.
They won't get there.
Supplies, everything, is, is going up?
My, my concern is, on one hand, the administration is wanting to raise taxes on people to pay for this project, and on the other hand, we're saying, okay, now we've got the money to pay for the project, let's increase the budget. You know, at, the, the money for the, we're increasing the amount of debt that we're raising the taxes for, and then that, to me, bothers me.
That's a good observation.
As far as the alternate, I just wanna point out that we were including, addressing the public restroom at Sepulveda Gym in every option. So that's something that, you know, we cannot, or don't have to consider, we can still include as an alternate, price everything out and make the decision once we get all the bids.
Yes.
And know the total-
We'll have to make our decision once we get the bids. Okay, Raoul and, and you've been involved with, uh, design, or at least reviewing the, the schematics, 'cause that's what we're here for, only for the schematics?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Coach?
Yes, sir.
Now, how about your coaches, have they been involved?
Yes, sir.
Coaches have been involved?
They've been heavily involved.
And they're-
Two different phases of redesign and going back and forth, so.
And everybody agrees that they're, they're happy with the schematic design?
Yes, yes.
'Cause that's all we're voting on today?
Yes, sir, we, we have, we worked throughout the summer with this, and we have the schematic design signed by both coaches-
Right.
-horteners, they're, they're perfectly happy with the floor plans.
Okay, well, we're not, we're not spending any money today, we're just approving the schematic design for the, for the-
Correct.
Athletic facilities for the girls and the boys.
And Dr. Canales, your recommendation is option B?
Our recommendation, after meeting the facilities committee, administration's recommendation, my recommendation is option B.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So move.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a, a motion by Sidoro and a second by Oscar to approve the recommendation to go with option B, which is, um, athletic building at Westco East High School, girls and boys, and fieldhouse at Westco High School, girls and boys.
Right.
Price to be determined as the bids come forward, and that is, uh, not an item, not an item number yet, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no?
No.
Motion carries. Now, this is only for the schematic design, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Andres, we have, uh, 4.6 million dollars already budgeted for this project, right? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir.
Moving on to item E, discussion and possible action to approve a contract with Alvarado Architects and Associates Incorporated for the design and new pavilions of, at Cuadre Pavilion, Cuadre Middle School, at Mary Hope Middle School, and a new canopy and restroom for the Science Wing Building at Central Middle School. Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, on, um, March 9th, 2017, you approved to hire Alvarado Architects and Associates to design pavilions at all three middle schools. Since that time, uh, with the input from Central Middle School regarding needs, we also, instead of pavilion, um, added the restroom at the Science Wing, and also the canopy at Central Middle School, linking the main building to the Science Wing. So the superintendent recommends, after meeting with staff, that the Board of Trustees considers approval of the contract with Alvarado Architects and Associates, Inc. of Donna, Texas, for the design of two pavilions, one at Cuadre Middle School, one at Mary Hope Middle School, and a new canopy and restrooms for the Science Wing Building at Central Middle School.
Where, where's the contract?
It's attached to the agenda item.
What's the fee?
6%.
Is that the going rate?
Yes, fee's pretty good.
Yeah, that's what it is.
6%.
Okay, uh, Andres, on this item, we're, we're running behind, uh, I know that all the, some, most of the other architects have already signed up?
Yes, sir, we, we had some questions on the restrooms, 'cause we changed them late.
Okay.
So they had to go through the calculation, make sure that we were within budget, and we are.
Okay, well, I know that, um, that the money, we've, we've approved the money for the project.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I wanna make sure that we proceed diligently and get these projects started.
And the attorney has reviewed the contract?
Yes, yes, the attorney.
So this, this is a contract to hire the architect, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And superintendent recommends?
The, that we do, that you consider approval of the contract with Alvarado Architects and Associates of Donna, Texas, for the design of the two pavilions, the canopy, and the restrooms at Central Middle School.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve. Second.
I have a motion by Oscar and a second by Sidoro to approve the contract with Alvarado Architects Incorporated for design of new pavilions at Cuadre Middle School, Mary Hope Middle School, and a new canopy restroom at Science Wing Building at Central Middle School. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say no? Motion carries. Item F, discussion and possible action to approve a procurement method of construction for the new pavilion at Cuadre Middle School and Mary Hope Middle School, and a new canopy and restroom while the, is that the one which is dated?
Yeah. Is that again?
This is a little bit, yes. Andres is gonna carry us through this one, multi-step.
Is the procurement?
Okay, I see. Okay, now we're ba, now we're building it. Okay. Discussion and possible action to approve the procurement method of construction for the new pavilion at Cuadre Middle School and Mary Hope Middle School, and a new canopy and restroom of, of Science Wing Buildings at Central Middle School project. Number one, board determination of procurement method of construction that will provide the best value to the district for the project. Number two, board determination to retain the authority to rank the proposals to be received for this project, or board delegation of their authority of the administration to rank the proposals to be received. And number three, approval of criteria and points to be used for ranking the proposals. Dr. Canales?
Okay, Andres, we need you to help through this one.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, administration recommends a competitive sealed proposal method of construction, that the Board of Trustees makes the determination to retain their authority to rank the proposals to be received for this project, or that you delegate the authority to the administration to rank the proposals to be received.
I'll, I'll make, I'll make the motion, seal, sealed bid proposals, that the administration rank them, and to approve that criteria as presented. Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Sidoro to go with the sealed bid, uh, method of construction, uh, to allow the administration to rank and to approve the criteria as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say no? Motion carries. Okay, G, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval to contract with Texas Fire Guard LLC of Texas, Texas, Westco, Texas, to conduct a design-built project for the installation of fire protection sprinkler service for the Louis Black Library Building. Dr. Canales?
Okay, Andres, please take us through this one.
Yes, Mr. Lopez, Dr. Canales, members of the board, we have, uh, we're working on setting up, uh, library at Louis Black, to use it as a dining area for our students at the Early College High School. And working with that, setting it up, the fire marshal told us that we needed to install a fire sprinkler system, fire protection system at the building. So in the meantime, we're serving the students at the colonial arts, uh, building, but we need to work at the library. But in order to install that, we had to go with that within 90 days from when school started, so we started looking around at the way that we could do it. And this company, uh, Fire Guard, Texas Fire Guard, can install the fire, uh, protection system at the school within the 90 days. It'll take him 90, 80 days to install it, and they would charge us $49,500. So we wanted to, we checked with the attorney, we consulted with Mr. George Grant for the Washka Jacobs Farm in San Antonio, and since he did less than $50,000, we don't have to go, the formal procurement system, so we don't have to go to the board and approve a method of construction or get quotes, and we'd like to recommend the company to do it at that rate, $49,500.
How much, Andres?
$49,500.
Is budgeted?
Yes, well, we have money in the construction fund to do the project.
I'll make, as your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion to approve, as presented.
Second.
A motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Dr. Rodriguez to approve the contract with Texas Fire Guard LLC of Texas to conduct a design-built project for the installation of fire project sprinkler services for the Louis Black Library Building. Any discussion?
I think this will end up saving us money in the long run, won't it, since we won't be paying for portable buildings anymore?
Yes, yes. Well, we're still using it, but we'd like to move it over there, that we are, for, it would be easier for our students to have an area for they all to eat, instead of bringing it from the other place.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say no? Motion carries. Item H, discussion and possible action and resolution regarding wage payment in connection with district closure on August 25th, 2017. Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, in the spirit of ensuring the safety and security of all staff members, given the pending landfall of Hurricane Harvey that was in the Gulf of Mexico as a category three on Friday, August the 25th, 2017, in the morning, and projected to be a category four by late Friday, Westaco ISD's employees worked a half-day on Friday, on that Friday. I am recommending that the board authorize via resolution continued wage payments to all employees who were instructed not to report to work the afternoon of August 25th to 2017.
Move to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Patrick and a second by Oscar to approve the resolution as presented by, uh, Dr. Canales in connection to the wage payment in connection with the district closure on August 25th of 2017. Any further discussion?
I just wanna thank, uh, Dr. Canales for thinking about our employees, you know, and sometimes, you know, what, hurricanes are so unpredictable, and you never know what's gonna happen, and, you know, I just wanna thank you for that.
It was good planning throughout you and the rest of administration. You kept us informed, and I think our staff was very appreciative of the fact they could have some time to prepare.
Thank you. The team thanks you.
And then staff goes back and works the half-day anyway. Later days, I mean, they very dedicated staff.
Yes, we do, staff.
But even though they got paid for half a day-
They get more than that.
Throughout the year, they get more than what they got paid.
They actually reported Saturday, you know?
Uh, yes, from what I understand, a lot of, a lot of them stayed in to finish their classrooms and get ready for, for the school year, so.
Very dedicated staff.
Dedication.
Good, good dedication, and, and we appreciate everybody. Thank you, Dr. Canales, and of course, our staff for, and all our team for coming together. Luckily, we dodged the bullet on that, uh, on that storm.
Yes.
Other parts of Texas were, were not as fortunate, but, uh, our prayers are with them regardless. Anyway, um, so we have a motion by Patrick, and who, who did the second on that one?
I did, sir.
And by Oscar. All those in favor signify by saying aye? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, say no? Motion carries. Now closed, closed meeting to discuss A, personnel matters, Texas Government Code five-five-one point zero-seven-four, number one, employment of personnel, number two, resignations, number three, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, evaluations, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Texas Government Code five-five-one point zero-seven-four and five-five-one point zero-seven-one. Item A, superintendent's recommendation for the position of director of maintenance. Item B, consultation with attorney regarding A, a pending contemplated litigation, B, settlement offer, or C, a matter in which the duty of the attorney of the Weslaco Independent School District under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state of Texas clearly conflicts with chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code, Texas Government Code five-five-one point zero-seven-one. The time is now seven-thirty-seven, and this board is going into closed session. And we are back on open session. Let the record reflect that, uh, Dr. Rivera left the meeting at eight fifteen. Closed meetings, items discussed were item A, personnel matters, Texas Government Code five-five-one point zero-seven-four, number one, employment of personnel, Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, I recommend that you approve the recommendation of contracts for certified professional personnel as discussed in closed session.
So we'll, second?
I have a motion by, uh, Dr. Rodriguez and a second by Patrick to approve, approve the employment of personnel as presented by administration. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no? Motion carries. Item number two, resignations, Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, I recommend that you approve the resignations, retirements of certified professional personnel as discussed in closed session.
Move to approve, second?
I have a motion by Patrick and a second by Dr. Rodriguez to approve the resignation as presented by Dr. Canales. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no? Motion carries. Item number three, deliberation regarding appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer, employee, or employee, Texas Government Code five-five-one point zero-seven-four and five-five-one point zero-seven-one. Item A, superintendent's recommendation for the position of director of maintenance, Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, I am recommending Amedico Garza as our new maintenance director.
So move.
Second?
We have a motion by Sidorov and a second by Patrick to approve Amedico Garza for the position of maintenance director. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say no? Motion carries. I like main, the, the other word sounds like- Director of maintenance.
Director of maintenance.
Or maintenance director, which one do you like better? There's more words in that. All right, congratulations, Amedico.
Thank you.
You've done a great job for us here at Weslaco, and, and I know you'll continue to make us a better place to be.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Item B, consultation with attorney regarding A, pending or contemplated litigation, B, a settlement offer, or C, a matter in which the duty of the attorney of the Weslaco Independent School District under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code, Texas Government Code five-five-one point zero-seven-one. That is a non-action item?
That's right.
And now we have item number fourteen, adjournment. Andrew normally does that one.
I'll move.
There you go. Okay, this meeting is adjourned, the time is now eight-twenty-one. Thank you.